Evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 14 Finance Committee. I am your host, Corey Schoonover. If you have noticed, the agenda's changed a tad. So just as for a brief rundown, all the new resolutions and ordinances we're going to go over, I'm just gonna kick it directly to the chair of whatever committee it's coming through, and then you can choose how you want to introduce it, and then hopefully you have someone from the city department to discuss it if you need. So do we have any questions before we get started? Great. So we'll start out, new resolutions, temporary resolutions 6325 coming through Public Works, Ms. Teener.
Yes, this is a grant that we're applying for that we've just kind of found out about recently. It needs to be actually suspended and voted on tonight. It's due August the 8th, and it's regarding the intersection of Pearson Memorial, the walkway there, to make it safer. The grant is for $400,000, and our 20% match would be eighty, or yes, $80,000. It does need to be in by the 8th, and we need to make things safer for pedestrians. And if Carrie would like to talk about the right of way?
I'm more than happy to talk about it, but it would not be nearly as fun as having Jeff Baird, our Assistant City Engineer, come up and give you all the engineering specifics. Thanks, Jeff.
He was hiding.
Yeah, this, what we're doing is we're wanting to put a grant application in to apply for acquiring the right of way for the Memorial Pierce Walks project. We're currently under design. It's probably about 50% complete design. Our right-of-way plans are done, and it's the new walks from Arlington to Whittier along Memorial Drive, and then also down Pierce, down to River Valley Drive there. And so what this grant is, is it's going to pay for, we're planning on using federal money, so we're making sure we have all the boxes checked, so we qualify for that federal money. So we have to make sure we acquire the right of way for all the federal standards. And so this grant will actually pay for the cost of acquisition itself, plus the cost of all the land. And there's, you know, quite a few permanent and temporary right-of-way takes that we need for this project. So this is applying for a grant to acquire the right of way for the project.
And if it does pass tonight, we'll have to have extra legislation to move the money for the $80,000?
Yeah, we just recently got the grant applications in, and they're due the 8th, so we have to kind of jump on it kind of quick.
Any questions?
What's the ultimate end game? What's the project look like at the end, once it's complete?
Well, once it's done, there's going to be a new crosswalk, three new crosswalks on Memorial Drive, one at the Kroger entrance, one down there, across with the little road that comes out with the, one of the outlets for the apartment complex back there, is that where the light, where the traffic signal is, and then down at Whittier, it will be a crossing. And there's going to be sidewalks on both sides of the road from Arlington all the way down to Whittier, and then also on only one side of the road, down Pierce. But it'll go from Memorial Drive all the way down to River Valley Drive.
As someone who's crossed Memorial Drive in the dark, I thank you.
Why would you cross Memorial Drive?
Because I locked my keys in my car.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to get that.
In my cellphone and everything else.
Thanks for clarifying.
Any other questions? And you said you were asking for suspension, Mr. Luckenberg?
Yes, and Mr. Luckenberg, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have next, temporary resolution 6425 coming through Economic Development, Ms. Hoop.
Yes, this is the same grant, but the Port Authority is going to be applying for $700,000 with a $140,000 match, paid for by the Port Authority. And it's going to fund design and engineering for improvements to Campground Road. And if anyone has any other questions, we also have to suspend because of the same deadline. But Stephanie, do you have anything else to add?
Yep, just that, like Jeff said, the application came out Monday, last Monday. But for the 20% match, we're going to use the TIP funds. The port will front the money because we, if all the TIPS pass, the TIP probably won't have enough money, so we'll front it, and then we'll get reimbursed down the road. And we're going to be using this for design work on Campground Road.
Any questions? And I have, so you asked for suspension, and I have, Ms. Kreitz is your second?
Yep.
Yeah, great. All right, temporary resolution 6525, that is coming through the Finance Committee, so I guess that's me. Um, yeah, yes, I did see Ms. Hamilton here. So we're going to move some funds?
Uh, we're just going to appropriate from my cash balance for some extra refunds that we need to finish off, help us to get through the end of the year. I had a couple of businesses that hit us with some refunds that were a little over $200,000 combined, so a portion of that is to help get us through the rest of the year. And then I am looking to move our backup server to the cloud. We've been kind of gimping along on the one that we've had for quite a while. It's an oldie that Trish was on, and we're just about giving it all that she's got, but we're about done. So this is going to allow us enhanced security, you know, access, and just help us have more memory for what we need to do in income tax.
Questions from anyone on that piece? So it says 250 for the refunds, and then 13.5 for the software.
Yep, and obviously what doesn't get used in refunds at the end of the year goes back to cash balance. So I just wanted to be a little proactive, just in case. We have to make it through the October 15th extensions, and that's when, well, through November as well, and sometimes we get some businesses towards that end that'll be realizing what their balance sheets are, so.
Okay. All right, I have three readings on that. Mr. Sully will be my second.
Okay.
Good?
Yep.
Thank you. Temporary resolution 6625, that's coming through Economic Development, Ms. Hoop.
Um, yes, this is to begin the annexation process for 163 acres from Greenfield Township. And I am asking for suspension, and Mr. Wing is going to be my second.
Does anybody have any questions? Stephanie, you want to?
I can always add something.
Add any more, yeah?
Yeah, so this is, like Ms. Hoop said, 163 acres, 65 on the east side of 33, and the remainder on the west side of 33, within the Rock Mill Industrial Park right on Wilson. And it is going to be zoned advanced manufacturing. And then we're already marketing the east side, and down the road, we'll market the other side as we begin to learn more about the site. We need to do a little due diligence.
Okay, are we good? You're going to ask for suspension with Mr. Wing is your second?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Stephanie?
Just wanted to give the reason for that. It's an expedited type 2 annexation, which requires us to follow the revised code timeline. So we have 20 days from the date the petition is filed, and the petition was filed on the 10th, I believe, so.
I feel like we're all should be experts on the, on these annexations. I feel like we're doing one every time we're sitting here. Is that, is that right? Because that's how it feels.
No, so.
You don't think we should be experts, or that's what you're, or like, we're not doing enough of them?
We're not doing one every time you meet. The issue is, there are multiple steps in the process, right? And so every time you meet, yes, you are doing something for one of them along the way in that process. But they're not new annexations every single time you meet, so.
All right, semantics, I feel, but.
We do think you're experts, though.
Okay, we have to be experts at something, I was hoping. All right, any other resolutions that we have? No? So we're going to move on to ordinances, temporary ordinance 3125, that is coming through Code Enforcement and Zoning, Mr. Sully.
All right, so we're going to be updating our building codes, our codes and zoning for short-term rentals. There's going to be a presentation tonight. Chaslin, I don't know if you want to talk now, or briefly?
Good evening, yes, this is just a proposed code for short-term rentals that we would add to our current zoning code, and then I'll be doing a presentation on, at the regular meeting shortly.
Okay, so we'll save all that, so if we do question and answer after a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll touch on that then, and then I have three readings, and Mrs. Hoop as your second? Yes? Okay. I like speeding through, I don't have time to write notes. We're gonna, meeting minutes should be interesting. Temporary ordinance 3225, that is coming through Economic Development, Ms. Hoop.
Yes, this is another annexation. It's to accept the, I think it's like half of an acre from Pleasant Township on Sheridan Drive. And then this one is two readings, with Mrs. Kreitz as my second. And then there's, there's another piece after it. I don't know if you want me to?
Okay, so 32 and 33?
Yeah.
Are for the same?
Yeah, so 33 just changes the zoning to manufactured zoning, and it's just a part of the annexation process.
Did you say manufactured?
Well, multifamily, I'm sorry. You're right, it's multifamily, it's not manufactured.
Sheridan. It's the castro.
Yeah.
It's residential, it's that little island on the Sheridan Drive housing development, so last, last couple steps.
And they're both going to be two readings.
Okay, and as Stephanie mentioned, it's not a different annexation, it's?
No.
Step 72 and 73 of Ewing Woods' annexation?
Yep.
Okay, so that covers 32 and 33. Anyone have any questions on those? No? Temporary ordinance 3425, that's also coming through Economic Development, Ms. Hoop?
Okay, so this is a companion piece to the resolution 6625. So this is to accept the annexation of the 163 acres back onto Campground Road.
Okay.
And it's also going to be suspended, and Wing will be my second.
Anything you want to add?
Uh-uh.
No? So the companion piece to 6625, you're not a different annexation?
That's right.
I'm just going to run with that.
See, you are an expert.
I'm just going to run with that line all night. Okay. Suspension, you said, Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Okay. Temporary ordinance 3525 is coming through Administrative Services, Mr. Luckenberg?
Yes, I'd like to ask our Safety Service Director to introduce her administrative assistant to describe what we're talking about here.
I'll take care of that, as the law director. Jackie is our court administrator in the Fairfield County Municipal Court, and she's here tonight on behalf of Judge Fields, much better looking and much more concise, so everybody, you know, be glad we have her. But she's here tonight because the, the court is having an unexpected retirement this year. The court's Director of Probation Services actually gave notice not too long ago that she was going to be retiring unexpectedly, and the court needs to fill her position. And all they really need from you is to change the name in the management pay ordinance from the title that it currently is, Director of Probation Services, to the new title, which is going to be Grants Manager and Writer, or Grants Writer and Manager, if I'm saying that correctly. The goal is to, the goal was to remove some of those probation services from the position so that it could focus exclusively on grants, and then also, obviously, when you take away those responsibilities, you can reduce the amount of pay that is, that is going to be paid. So in order for them to start advertising for the position, they need to be able to put the position's name into writing, right, into the advertisement, and the goal is to, you know, keep the, keep the expectations in line with what the job is actually going to be. So I'll let Jackie answer any other questions you may have.
Any questions? Ordinarily, I get to hide behind Judge Fields, so they are at conference this week, so I am here to answer any questions you may have. If any of you have worked with Tamara in the past, she is a dynamo as far as applying for, getting grants, managing grants. She has just continued to accept more and more job duties over her tenure with the court, and we'd like to realign that and just focus mainly on applying for grants and managing the grants. So that's, that's why we're here before you tonight, as Stephanie said.
Thank you, thank you for the explanation. In relation to the other duties that you say that are going away related to probation?
Yes.
Who would be assuming those, and would there be any companion pieces of legislation that might result?
So currently, our Chief Probation Officer, Matt Shine, is going to be taking on some of, some more of the personnel duties that Tamara had been doing, and the other probation officers that work directly with her for the grant programs, the Drug Court, the Veterans Court, the Mental Health Court, and the Opportunity Court, they'll be taking on some of those duties as well. We would kind of like to see how things go the next six months, and as we work towards the pay ordinance for 2026, then we can reevaluate where we would like to do possibly some job description and salary adjustments there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you.
Because of the nature, we don't have any additional meetings in July, we'd like to suspend the second and third readings, and Councilman Bisjack will be my second.
Okay. Have any more ordinances that we need to discuss? Seeing none, I am open for department updates. Anybody have a department update? No? I scared everybody to the, you're making him do a department update? Perfect.
He had a departmental update that he wanted to share really badly tonight, so we'll let him come back up.
Yeah, it looks like, yeah.
Kurt doesn't let him out very often, so he's using all the time he can.
Yeah, well, I don't know if everybody's aware, but we got a RACE grant earlier in the year, we rewarded it, but it was put on hold, and we just recently notified that the, the federal government, they're ready to move forward with the RACE grant. And this RACE grant is to fund a feasibility study for the east side industrial connector, which the concept of that is it'll be a brand-new road, brand-new corridor, and it's going to start, it's going to parallel US 22, and it's going to connect the 22 Eastern Memorial, or Western Memorial, and then go east into the east side of town and come back into 22 East of the soccer fields. And the idea of this is to take a lot of that truck traffic and commercial traffic and route it around downtown rather than through downtown. And another purpose of this is to make it easier to get to the industrial area out there on the east side, to try to help develop that area, the industrial park on the east side of town. So right now, we're moving forward, and we're in the, doing the grant agreement, and we just had a conversation with them and all the stuff we got to do and all the stuff they got to do, and the grant agreement will probably take about four months to get accomplished. And then once we do get the grant agreement, we'll start doing RFQs and putting together timelines, et cetera, to actually go out and get a consultant to help us do the feasibility study for this project.
Any questions from Mr. Baird? No? All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Ms. Woody?
I just have a few updates that I'd like to update everyone. If you didn't notice, the work on City Hall has officially started. The contractors have been there for just over a week now. Scaffolding starts going up next week. They're hoping to have all the scaffolding up and out, and all the sidewalks reopened for the art walk, which leads me into point number two. If everyone noticed the alley, I know that I've been getting a lot of questions about the alley. The contractor was hoping to have it done last week, however, with all of our rain, it keeps getting delayed. They are working as fast as they can to try and have the alley complete before the art walk as well. So again, I'm sure you're getting questions because I know I'm getting a lot of questions. If you didn't see my email earlier today, I also wanted to update you. City Council graciously allowed us to enter into a contract with Fairfield Medical Center this year to offer free urgent care clinic hours to our city employees, free of charge. And I sent out the email update this morning, but also wanted to let you know on council floor that so far, in the first four months of operation under this contract, they have treated 381 of our individuals, saving our health insurance over $6,000 so far in four months, and saving our employees $9,500 in co-pays. So I thought that was an awesome thing to share with you. Also received an update this afternoon about our mental health counseling, and they have also seen 30 people so far for free mental health counseling. So again, thank you, Council, for allowing us to enter into those contracts. I think that it's a great service that we're offering to our employees, and I thought that that would be great to share with you.
Very good. Any questions? No? Any more departmental updates? Seeing none. Meeting prep for this evening, Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Chairman Schoonover. I almost called you Chairman Wolfinger. Tonight, for the, tonight's meeting, we have a presentation by our city planner, Chaslin Carter, related to the short, proposed short-term rental code to be included in our zoning code, and we also have a public hearing on the Ewing Woods LLC zoning map amendment.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Other discussion items, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. One of the things I have a pleasure of doing is periodically appointing individuals to various boards and commissions within the city. At the end of this month, we have two vacancies occurring on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Rebecca Anderson, who's a long-term member of that board, has agreed to stay on. Jim Bonson generously agreed to stay on should we find no replacement. I'm happy to report that I asked several people, and Tom James, former city council person, has agreed to be appointed to that position. Those positions do require council confirmation. I invited Tom here tonight and Rebecca. What I should tell you is Rebecca's in Chicago, grandchild number two is being delivered. So she wanted to be here, she agreed to be here, but with the caveat that grandchildren come first, so she's not here tonight. I did send you her resume, she's well-qualified for that position, I strongly recommend her. And I think if anyone has any questions of Tom, he is here presently, but I do think most of you know him. So with that said, I will be asking during the new business portion of tonight's meeting for you to confirm those appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Do we want to see Tom's face at the podium?
Yes.
Oh, there he is. You were blocked, I was blocked, so now I saw you can sit down.
I know that my appointment might be a little contentious because many of you know me, and I'm hoping that some of you will get past some of that, and I will very much appreciate the opportunity to do this. I've been compassionate about this city for a long, long time, after having served four years on this, this legislative body, and I'm looking forward to being part of the Board of Zoning Appeals and doing whatever we can to keep this city going in a good direction, and, and in a very good direction as well. So, do you have any questions?
No questions, but just a thank you for your willingness to serve.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tom. Anything else for finance? No, I will ask for a motion, we adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and second, we are adjourned. Thank you.
The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will commence promptly at 6:30.
Hi, this is Anna Tobin from the Senior Hub, your local meals-on-wheels provider. We provide in-home services to reduce isolation and hunger while empowering caregivers in their role of caring for a family member or friend. This July, we are once again honored to be chosen by the Buckeye Automotive Family Buckeye Cares Program. Buckeye will make a generous donation for every car sold this month. From all of us at the Senior Hub and the ones we provide for, we say thank you.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home in Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
To accept the things we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and finally, the wisdom to know the difference. I now call the January, or excuse me, the July, I wish it was January, the July 14th, 2025 Lancaster City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Here.
Mr. Bisjack?
Here.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Here.
Mrs. Hoop?
Here.
Mr. Luckenberg?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Sully?
Here.
Ms. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Wing?
Here.
Please let the record reflect, nine members of City Council are present. We currently do have an opening due to the resignation at the last meeting of Councilman Wolfinger. We now move to the reading and disposing of the Journal.
I have regular meeting minutes dated June 23rd, 2025.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the Journal.
Second.
We have a motion and second to receive and file the Journal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We now move on to the reports of city officials.
I have an email dated June 25th, 2025 regarding Lancaster City Council at large vacancies, submitted by Law Director Stephanie Hall. Email dated June 25th, 2025 regarding property tax elimination not being on the November ballot, submitted by Mayor McDonough Daniel. Email dated June 27th, 2025 regarding the City of Lancaster 2024 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, submitted by Auditor Nettles. Email dated June 30th, 2025 regarding July Planning Commission, submitted by City Planner Chaslin Carter. Email dated July 3rd, 2025 regarding short-term rentals presentation, submitted by President, or Council President Jeff Porter. Email dated July 7th, 2025, City Hall's clock bell tower, submitted by Service Safety Director Carrie Woody. Email dated July 9th, 2025 regarding the upcoming mean council special presentation, submitted by City Planner Chaslin Carter. Email dated July 11th, 2025 regarding Board of Zoning Appeals, submitted by Mayor Don McDaniel. And lastly, email dated July 14th, 2025 regarding Parks Department Budget for 2026, submitted by Mr. Ailes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We'll now move on to communications.
I have email dated June 24th, 2025 regarding Lancaster City Council at large vacancies, submitted by Deputy Director of Fairfield County Board of Elections, Jane Hanley. Series of emails regarding public records requests and environmental site assessment, submitted by Staff Scientist Colin McQuade of Tac. submitted by Staff Scientist Colin McQuade of Terracotta.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion in second to receive and file the communications. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We will now move on to the portion of our agenda for presentations. This evening, we have a presentation by our city planner, Chaslin Carter, regarding a proposed short-term rental code. Are you, are you going to have some slides? I'll get out of the way so people can view.
All right, good evening, and thank you all for giving me an opportunity to present the proposed code for short-term rentals.
Can you see Chas?
Yes. So a little background behind the code. As you know, in September of 2023, Lancaster adopted a new zoning code, and there was a section that was reserved for short-term rentals. However, it wasn't included in that code due to the legislation going through the state. That legislation is still pending with the state, and with this lack of regulation, we are finding that some of the short-term rental owners are not submitting their lodging taxes to the City Income Tax Department, which, as you know by law, is required. These taxes are used to support nonprofits such as the Fairfield County Visitors Bureau and the Decorative Arts Center, two agencies that I think we can all agree help us create a solid economy in our downtown Lancaster. The zoning office also receives several phone calls sporadically from interested parties that are trying to establish a short-term rental, and they're just looking for some kind of guidance. So I thought the best way to go through the code was just section by section. 1131, this is what is required in the zoning clearance permit. Section A establishes that a zoning clearance permit is needed to operate a short-term rental in Lancaster. The corresponding sections state that a separate permit will be needed for each dwelling unit, and that a copy of that permit must be maintained and available on-site. Section B establishes that each permit will be effective until December 31st of the calendar year of issuance. Section C states that a renewal application is due by the first Monday in November prior to the expiration date. Section 113102 establishes that the mayor of Lancaster will determine the fee schedule, and Section A states that any lodging tax will be paid directly to the City Income Tax Department. 113103 list our application requirements. These are pretty standard of our zoning applications as well, with things like the address of short-term rentals, the type of dwelling, the name of the contact, information for the applicant, the name of the local host or the emergency contact that can respond within an hour if they're different, they're different individuals, the maximum number of occupants that the applicant is trying to establish, and the maximum number of motor vehicles, including garage space, two in the driveway, and two on-street parking. A specific number of parking is not required in the Central Business District if the premises are within 1,000 feet of on-street parking or public parking facility. The required off-street and Central Business District parking aligns with our current zoning code, Chapter 1143.11. It's also in our requirements to have a labeled site plan with an aerial photo that kind of identifies where these parking spaces will be, and then a floor plan that shows the locations of the bedrooms. This will help with our occupancy and zoning compliance. It also requires a copy of the background check for the applicant, local host, and property manager, if these are separate individuals. Section B establishes that any change in information in the application or renewal should be reported to our offices within 10 days of the change. Section C establishes that any change in owner or leaseholder shall void the current zoning permit. This aligns with our current standards that a new tenant or change of business would have to get new permits and occupancy. 113104 sets forth some standards for short-term rentals. On-site parking shall only be in spaces designated on approved site plan except for the Central Business District. No advertising or signage will appear on the exterior, or on the exterior shall be permitted, and then securities cameras shall be installed on the exterior of the property or in communal spaces such as living room or kitchen. No cameras shall be placed in bedrooms or bathrooms. The short-term rentals shall not house sex offenders, be rented by the hour, or use for any sexually oriented businesses. The short-term applicant, short-term rental applicant must obtain an occupancy permit from the City Building Department prior to renting the premises. The occupancy permit will help establish compliance with state and local fire and building laws. Short-term rentals shall not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood in a manner that disturbs the peace, and they must be maintained in a manner that remains free from zoning, building, or international property maintenance code violations. The grounds for denial of a permit would be if the applicant submits an incomplete application or renewal and/or fails to pay the required fee, if the applicant makes a material misrepresentation of facts, if the short-term rental premises has pending zoning, building, or international property maintenance code or other regulatory violations, or if the applicant or short-term rental premises have a documented history of nuisance behavior or criminal activity that endangers neighborhood or public safety. 113106 is the revocation of a permit. It establishes that a short-term rental permit may be revoked and prohibit the application or local host from operating a short-term rental or reapplying for a zoning clearance permit for a period of six months if one of the following. If there's any violation of any of the requirements set forth in Section 113103 or Section 113104 of the codified ordinances, if they fail to permit the city planner or designate the building official that's going to cover the occupancy to inspect the premises to verify compliance with the provisions of the chapter in accordance with Section 115506 of the codified ordinances, or if they fail to register with the City Income Tax Department or failing to pay the lodging tax or fees required by the codified ordinances or a higher revised code. 113107 lays out the appeal of denial or revocation, an appeal from an administrative official to the Board of Zoning Appeals in accordance with the provisions of Section 115707 of the codified ordinances. And 1131.99 establishes the penalty that any persons who violate the provisions of this chapter shall be guilty of a misdemeanor of the fourth degree on the first offense and a misdemeanor of the second degree for each offense thereafter. My last slide just kind of gives a draft timeline pending, dependent on the approval by city council and if there's any kind of revisions that need to be made, but the Planning and Zoning Office would like to have time to send out letters and applications to all the existing owners, set up an open house for short-term owners and hosts to walk them through the process and answer any questions, and then kind of set a timeline that's already established in this code for having applications due and fees due by November 3rd. Then by the end of December, we will have those 2026 permits issued. Any questions?
We'll turn back on the lights. Question. Do we have any questions from council members at this time? Councilmember Schoonover.
I know we talked about this earlier, but we saw an email that had the application. I know that you said that that is still going through some changes, so.
Yeah, that's a checklist that we'll hand out with the applications that lets them know like what needs to be included.
Okay. And I get the idea that we have some owners that want some guidance, but can you give us an idea how many short-term rentals we currently have?
I believe that we have, thanks for that, we have 42 currently operating in the city.
Ms. Haberfield, would you like to come forward because there may be questions, so you can introduce yourself.
Should I re, should I rephrase? I'm sorry. Jonette, go ahead.
I'm Jonette Haberfield. I'm the Executive Director of Visit Fairfield County. That's the tourism office that the funds from the lodging tax are 100% of our funding. So we promote the county, including the city, for people to come and visit.
Thank you.
Councilmembers Schoonover.
So we have 42.
They come and go because people can take their rentals on and off the platform. So at the most, we've had as many as 42 that are renting their units as many as 100 nights per year. So, and that was actually what I looked at today, that some of them have rented them 100 nights so far this year, so it could potentially be double that per unit. So it's a pretty significant amount of properties.
My other questions, or am I have to wait till we have the application?
Council, other members that may have questions? Yes, Councilmember Hoop.
So of the 42 that you know you have, how many of them are paying taxes?
That would be a better question.
For Amy.
Because it changes periodically. I would say, I don't know, at one point it was only like 3%. That's countywide.
Yeah, it was low.
So, you know, there is, I don't know if you guys are familiar with this, but there's a 3% lodging tax on the county level, and then there's an additional 3% lodging tax for the city. So it doesn't matter to me where the funding comes from. You know, I just look at the total numbers more so than just what the city. So Amy might.
What matters to me? Like Jonette said, there's no telling because for us right now, there is not a mechanism in place to track fees. It has literally been me since I took over getting on the platforms and looking, oh, I want to book a place in Lancaster in July. Who's going to pop up? So, like she said, it fluctuates. We have some that are very diligent about sending in their things every month and others that are below the radar. They don't use platforms, maybe they use word of mouth. As you can tell, it's just very underregulated here, and it's been, it's been difficult. I mean, for all of us to try to figure out a good system to make sure they're getting their money, that I'm not spending, you know, half a day on VRVO and Airbnb looking to see who's not. And then, and then that is, you know, then you got to try to figure out who they are, where they are, and it's a lot of work.
Director Hamilton, if I might. And when we're talking about the tax itself.
Yes.
That tax is being paid by the individuals renting, not, not the, not the homeowners.
Just like you go to the Holiday Inn, it's the exact same tax. If you're staying there under 30 days, it's a 3%. For us, for the city, it's a 3% tax.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoop.
Yeah, just to follow up, I know, or I think I know, in larger cities, those platforms automatically collect tax?
They do.
Is there a way for you to solicit?
We have tried, they will not. I know Athens is having the same issue. It has to be a huge volume. There was a piece, I know, in the House for the state that they were trying to get that portion of it to mandate that those platforms collect for us, but I haven't seen where it's moved.
Yeah, it's still in the House. There are actually three different bills that are addressing this at the state level. You know, one of them, of course, we don't support, which takes away House rules, so you guys couldn't do anything about them. And then there are two other ones that are pretty similar that, as an association of Convention and Visitors bureaus, we support. And this is mostly about safety and equity. You know, we need to know who they are and where they are, but also the hotels have been collecting this tax for decades, and it's not fair that if you stay in a hotel, you have to pay the tax. If you stay in a short-term rental, you don't. But in terms of locating them, we do have a dashboard now that I'm going to be able to share with Chaslin's department that helps us identify them. It doesn't necessarily give us the owner's contact information, so I'm in full support of, hey, get their contact information, because, because of our lack of hotel rooms here in Lancaster, we try to put every opportunity for a place for people to sleep on our website, but we spend as much time as Amy does trying to find them so that we can put them on our website so that a visitor knows where they can stay. So it's a vicious circle, and this would eliminate a lot of that problem, but also make it equitable for the hotel property owners and, you know, residential property owners. And the safety issue, I like the idea of there being inspections because honestly, we have identified units that are in Lancaster that I will not put on our website because they're not in safe locations. So, you know, I would know that if there was an occupancy permit issued and if safety standards were being applied, just like they would if a hotel was, a new hotel came to be, there would be an occupancy permit done and fire inspections and all kinds of other things that would be much more safer for our visitors.
I think Councilmember Hoop's wrapped up her questions. Anybody else? Councilmember Bizjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the subject of public safety, I mean, how many bagged actors, if for lack of a better term, are in the short-term rental business in the City of Lancaster? You know, how prevalent of an issue is it?
I only am aware of one property that has been problematic, and the city's addressing that issue. I mean, it's a building that's right downtown that should not be.
And I have one more question, Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you. And then on the subject of inspections, and I apologize if you stated this already, but I just want to make sure it's clear, how often will you be inspecting the properties for safety?
So there will be an initial inspection, occupancy inspection, and zoning, and then annually, we'll do a zoning kind of checkup.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carter, if you would stay. I have a question related to the parking requirements. Will you go through those with, with me and just give them to me once again? So units that are not located within the Central Business District, what are their parking requirements?
So they are, they can have parking in their garage, and there are two in their driveway, and then they can count two on-street parking.
So, so are they required to have all of those available, or is, what is the?
Yeah, that would be like the maximum.
Okay, so what, what would be the requirement to have a unit that's not in the Central Business District? How many spaces would they have to have?
So we would have, I mean, I guess four, and then if they had a garage, they could use that space as well.
Are they going to, are they going to have to have? I guess what I'm getting at is, will they have to have five spaces to get a unit approved? Or can they have something less than that?
They would, if they don't have a garage, there wouldn't be five. So the two in the driveway, the off, two, I guess, two off-street, two on-street parking would be counted. So two off-street, and then similar codes, a lot of codes that I've looked into, they will require a parking spot or even a parking spot and a half per bedroom. So our code is a little less restrictive than that.
So if they don't have a driveway, and they have no off-street parking, and there's only on-street parking available, would a unit be approved?
That would be something that we'd have to take into consideration. It might be something that has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to be approved. And the Board of Zoning Appeals does see a lot of cases for parking, and they will work with the applicants and see what makes sense, I guess, in the area that they're in.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from council members on the presentation this evening? Councilmember Solley.
So what we're proposing here is pretty consistent with what all the other cities in Ohio have done?
There's differences in every code, but it's, for the most part, pretty consistent. There's some that are more restrictive, there are some that are equal, and there's some that don't have any at all, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions at this time? Councilmember Hoop.
What would be, have you landed on fees for the application and the renewals?
Yeah, so the initial application would be 150, and that's consistent with our commercial zoning that we would charge any business for their zoning fee. And then the annual renewal would be half of that, so it'd be 75.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none. We thank you for coming and presenting that information, and thank you for your work on this. And we have tonight's, the initial reading on this proposed legislation. We will have two more readings before we move forward. Petitions and memorials.
There are none this evening.
We have reached the time in council's agenda that we have permission of voters and taxpayers to address council. The rules are such of permission of voters and taxpayers that if you have something that you wish to address to city council, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and sign the clipboard. You have three minutes to address council. We will not be answering questions directly from the floor, and your comments must be directed to council, not members of the audience.
Mr. President, members of council, I'm Bob Lovell. I reside at 243 East Fifth Avenue. I'm also a member of the Parks Board of Commissioners. As some of you may know, the Parks Board received a letter recently written by a longstanding member of that board, and it was concerning the lack of development of Bowers Park. I'm here to tell you that that letter was answered by Steve Gayfield, and in there, he cites some of the reasons, most of which are not within our control. And in that, a high point of that is him stating that we have successfully accommodated all Little League baseball in the meantime. As frustrating as this project is, it's just like this spring. We have a landscaping company out there. Their equipment showed up and the workers did not. Putting us behind even more. Like I said, most of these things are out of our control. It reminds me of the frustrated pickleball people of Lancaster years ago. That project kept getting pushed back simply because it was considered a small project and no one would place a bid. Again, it was out of our control. We finally did get the job done. If you've been with me every step of the way, I mean, there are reasons, I know, if you just drive by the site once a month or whatever, you'd be going, what the heck? And I understand that. Let us also remind you, I think it was five years ago, City of Lancaster passed a tax levy, which in part was to fund rehabilitation of City Hall, and by all appearance, it looks like that project after five years is just getting started. So these things can be frustrating. I think you should understand that on that basis. I can promise you that that park will be developed. And the slowness of it is not due to negligence, quite the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else this evening who would like to address city council during public comment?
My name's CJ Estel. I have a handful of rental properties in the area. I do not have any short-term rental properties, but I do try to do everything correctly. I try to get the permits. I try to go through things. I did acquire a property that was used as a short-term rental prior to me getting it, and I understand the frustration of lack of taxes being collected, lack of people following the processes. You know, that particular building, upon purchasing it, I wanted to preserve my ability to use that as a short-term rental. So I went through a variance process. I, I got the approval for that. I, again, I haven't done anything with that. But as we look at the short-term rental guidelines and things that are here, if the primary concern is around we're not able to collect our tax dollars from the, the lodging tax, I don't see how a lot of the things that are in this relate to that, whether that's a floor plan, whether that's a background check for the owners, whether that's a background check for the managers. There, there's a lot of stuff in here that does not seem related to what the stated goal is, and it seems like it's a money grab, quite frankly. There's, you know, when I look at the cost of paying somebody to do floor plans, paying somebody to, to do everything on these, these checklists, go through these inspections, go through the filing fees, and what's to say that you're not going to, to take the next step and say, you know what? We need a registry rental for all rentals in, in the area. You know, you guys already have information about who the owners are through the, the utilities department with direct contact information. There are ways to get ahold of people if there are problems there. You know, when it comes to the, the people that are renting our facilities, I do have short-term rentals in other areas. I couldn't tell you if somebody's a registered sex offender. I don't have that information available to me when they book my place. I, I agree, there may be safety issues, but I, I think that this needs a lot more discussion before you, you can look to pass this as it stands. I'll, I'll put together a little bit more thorough of a list and get it to, to one of the council members here to, to be able to go over it in more detail. But I just wanted to voice my disappointment in reading and seeing this and state that I don't think it accomplishes the goal that you guys say is the goal of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other individual who wishes to address city council this evening? Seeing none, we thank you for your attendance at tonight's meeting. Now move on to reports of standing committees.
I have finance committee meeting minutes dated June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, submitted by Mr. Schoonover. Service committee meeting minutes dated July ninth, twenty-twenty-five, submitted by Mr. Ailes. Service finance committee agenda dated July eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, submitted by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have motion, second, to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Reports of special committees?
I have none this evening.
Thank you. We'll now move on to public hearings, and tonight we have a public hearing regarding Ewing Woods LLC and a zoning map amendment. The process for public hearings is that we allow proponents of the amendment to speak first. And if anybody wants to do that, they must come to the podium and sign the clipboard. And after that, we will hear from opponents of the zoning amendment, and then we would have a rebuttal period. If you seek to utilize a rebuttal or another comment period, you must have spoken in favor of the proposed zoning amendment. Law Director Hall, does that adequately cover everything we need to?
Uh, yes, you can rebut too if you spoke against it as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, and is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the Ewing Woods zoning map amendment?
Good evening. My name is Chris Tumlin. I'm a representative of the ownership group. My address is 250 Civic Center Drive, Columbus, Ohio. I just want to give a, a quick introduction on, on what we're requesting this evening. Our entity owns about fifty-two acres of land. The proposed point-six acre tract that's in the middle of the fifty-two acres is what we're talking about this evening. This property was acquired after the fifty-two acres was annexed and rezoned. This, this piece of ground was, was acquired to accommodate the entry drive for the development and, and gives us an opportunity to control our, our front door. The, the zoning being proposed is consistent with the surrounding land zoning and would appreciate your support this evening. Happy to answer any questions that council may have about the project.
And your proposed zoning is?
Uh, RM is the proposed zoning.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed zoning map amendment? Hearing none, we will now move on to opponents of the proposed zoning map amendment. Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing, but before I do, are there any questions from any council members? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing on the Ewing Woods zoning map amendment. We'll now move on to the reading of resolutions. We have no third readings this evening of resolutions. We will begin with second reading, temporary resolution fifty-eight, twenty-five.
Have a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the law enforcement block, JAG grant police fund two zero two seven, and approve a then-and-now certificate for purchases. This is through safety committee, Mr. Bizjack and Ms. Teener.
Council member Bizjack?
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution fifty-eight, twenty-five. Temporary resolution fifty-nine, twenty-five.
This is a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the DOJ Equitable Sharing Fund two zero four eight for grant match dollars for the major crimes unit. Again, this is through safety committee, Mr. Bizjack and Mr. Sully.
Council member Bizjack?
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution fifty-nine, twenty-five. Temporary resolution sixty dash twenty-five.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the point-four-five Police Fire and Levy twenty-twenty-one Fund two zero five one for the purchase of four police vehicles, excuse me, reused by the Lancaster Police Department. Again, this is through safety committee, Mr. Bizjack and Ms. Teener.
Council member Bizjack?
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution sixty, twenty-five. Temporary resolution sixty-one, twenty-five.
A resolution to schedule Lancaster City Council meetings and finance committee meeting for twenty-twenty-six. This is through law committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mr. Bizjack.
Council member Kreitz?
Yes, thank you. Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution sixty-one, twenty-five. Temporary resolution sixty-two, twenty-five.
A resolution to increase receipts, appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the Public Transit Fund two zero two one and to declare an emergency. This is through finance committee, Mr. Schoonover and Mr. Ailes.
Council member Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution sixty-two, twenty-five.
Second.
We have motion, second, to suspend, to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution sixty-two, twenty-five. Council member Schoonover, any discussion on the motion to, to suspend?
Auditor Nettles, this is the final closeout, if you will, of transit accounts?
Yes, I believe it is. I've got in contact with the, the county that stated the grant, the final grant that they're getting a reimbursement for that has to come through us. This, this grant is in the city's name, and, um, yeah, we've got all the rebates that they need from workers' comp and for that end, so now we can appropriate those.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. We have no further questions. Please call the roll on the motion to suspend.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution sixty-two, twenty-five passes nine to zero. Council member Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-two, twenty-five.
Second.
We have motion, second, to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-two, twenty-five. Council member Schoonover, any further discussion?
No, sir.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-two, twenty-five passes nine to zero. We will now move on to the first reading of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution sixty-three, twenty-five.
A resolution to authorize the service safety director to apply for grant funding from the Central Ohio Royal Planning Organization Dedicated Funds Program Grant to Fund Right, Right-of-Way Acquisition for the Memorial Pierce Walkways Project and to declare an emergency. This is through Public Works Committee and Ms. Teener and Mr. Locktonberg.
Council member Teener?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution sixty-three, twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution sixty-three, twenty-five. Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Council member Teener?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second, third reading of temporary resolution sixty-three, twenty-five passes nine to zero. Council member Teener?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-three, twenty-five.
Second.
We have motion, second, to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-three, twenty-five. Any discussion? Council member Teener?
Yes, this is a grant we just found out about, and it needs to be in by August the eighth, and it's a, a grant money to fund the right-of-way acquisition for the Memorial Pierce Walkways Project to make it safe, safer for pedestrians around that area, and it also around the Arlington Avenue also. And it's a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, and we will need to pay eighty thousand in money of twenty percent so that we can fund the project. And that would be a separate piece of legislation if it passes tonight.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Temporary resolution sixty-three, twenty-five passes nine to zero. Now move on to temporary resolution sixty-four, twenty-five.
A resolution to authorize the service safety director to apply for grant funding from the Central Ohio Royal Planning Organization Dedicated Funds Program Grant to fund design and, designed of and engineering for the improvements of the campground road and to declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mrs. Kreitz.
Council member who?
Um, yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution sixty-four dash twenty-five.
Second.
We have motion, a second, to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution sixty-four, twenty-five. Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Council member who?
No, just that the deadline's August eighth?
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules, waive the second, third reading of temporary resolution sixty-four, twenty-five passes nine to zero. Council member who?
Um, yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record tempor- temporary resolution sixty-four dash twenty-five.
Second.
We have motion, a second, to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-four, twenty-five. Any further discussion on the?
No, we discussed it in finance, so.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Temporary resolution sixty-four, twenty-five passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution sixty-five, twenty-five.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the city income tax fund two zero one six to accommodate increased refunds in twenty-twenty-five and to pay to replace the backup server for the income tax department with a cloud-based system. This is through finance committee, Mr. Schoonover and Mr. Sully.
Council member Schoonover?
It's the first of three readings?
First of three readings on temporary resolution sixty-five, twenty-five. Temporary resolution sixty-six, twenty-five.
A resolution stating the services to be provided by the municipal corporation to annex territory of Mark A. and Beth A. Powers for the expedited type-two annexation of parcel number zero one four zero one one two five zero zero, zero one four zero one one two three zero zero, zero one four zero one zero two, or four two zero zero, zero one zero, zero one four zero one zero one five zero zero, and zero one four zero one one- parcel number 0140112500, 0140112300, 0140102, or 4200, 010, 0140101500, and 0140112501, consisting of 163.609 plus or minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mr. Wayne.
Council member Hoop.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of temporary resolution 6625.
Second.
A motion is second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third readings of temporary resolution 6625. And to note, I think, speaking for Clerk Scott, I think she will be happy that she doesn't have to do a second and third reading. Any further discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonburg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 6625 passes nine to zero. Council member Hoop.
Oh, yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 6625.
Second. A motion is second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 6625. Any further discussion?
No.
Law Director Hall.
Just briefly, President Porter, I wanted to recognize that Zach Walker from the Plank Law Firm is here in case anybody has questions. I don't think he was able to make it in time for Finance Committee, but he is here now in case anybody has any questions for him. So thank you for being here tonight, Zach.
Are there any questions from council members regarding the annexation? I don't hear any, so we thank you for coming and attending this evening's meeting. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonburg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 6625 passes nine to zero. We'll now move on to the reading of ordinances. We have no third readings this evening, so we move to second readings, beginning with temporary ordinance 2725.
Sorry. An ordinance creating five incentive districts and declaring improvements to certain real property within the incentive districts to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, identifying certain public infrastructure improvements that once will, once made, will benefit or serve the parcels in the incentive districts, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an incentive district public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such services, authorizing payments to the Lancaster City School Districts, and approving related matters. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mr. Wayne.
Council member Hoop.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance 2725.
Second. A motion is second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance 2725. Any discussion on the motion to suspend?
No.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonburg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 2725. Any discussion? Council member Hoop.
Um, this is just the developer's TIF at Powers Run off of 188.
Thank you. Any discussion from council members? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonburg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 2725 passes nine to zero. Temporary ordinance 2825.
An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain real property located in the city of Lancaster, Ohio to be public purpose, declaring such improvement to be exempt from real property taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.40B, requiring the owners thereof to make annual service payments in lieu of taxes, describing the public infrastructure improvements to be made that will directly benefit the real property, establishing a public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of service payments together with relation, with related authorizations. This, again, is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mrs. Kreitz.
Council member Hoop.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 28-25.
We're on second, we're on second of three readings, correct?
Oh, God, I'm sorry.
I was just assuming there were all two readings.
Nope, you're all good.
Just joking.
All right. We're on second of three readings on temporary ordinance 2825. Temporary ordinance 2925.
An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain real property located in the city of Lancaster, Ohio to be a public purpose, declaring such improvement to be exempt from real property taxation pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.40B, requiring the owners thereof to make annual service payments in lieu of taxes, describing the public infrastructure improvements to be made that will be directly benefit the real property, establishing a public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of service payments together with related authorizations. Again, this is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mr. Schoonover.
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance 2925. Temporary ordinance 3025.
An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain real property located in the city of Lancaster, Ohio to be a public purpose, declaring such improvement to be exempt from real property taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.40B, requiring the owners thereof to make annual service payments in lieu of taxes, describing the public infrastructure improvements to be made that will directly benefit the real property, establishing a public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of service payments together with related authorizations. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mrs. Kreitz.
Council member Hoop.
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance 3025. We will now move on to the first reading of ordinances, beginning with temporary ordinance 3125.
Um, ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, an ordinance to amend the Lancaster codified ordinance Part 11 Planning and Zoning Title III, zoning and property restrictions, and to adopt Chapter 1131 Short Term Rentals. This is through Code Enforcement, Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee, Mr. Sully and Mrs. Hoop.
Council member Sully.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be the first of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance 3125. Temporary ordinance 3225.
An ordinance to accept the annexation of .0605 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mrs. Kreitz.
Council member Hoop.
First of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary ordinance 3225. Temporary ordinance 3325.
An ordinance to amend the zoning map subject to passage of the annexation of .605 plus or minus acres in the Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency. Again, this is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mr. Wayne.
Council member Hoop.
Um, first of, first of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary ordinance 3325. Temporary ordinance 3425.
An ordinance to accept a petition for the expedited type-two annexation of 163.6098 plus or minus acres in the Greenfield Township to consent to annexation and to declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mr. Mrs. Hoop and Mr. Wayne.
Also, to provide a buffer for incompatible land use pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 709.023C and to declare an emergency. Council member Hoop.
We're still on 34-25, right?
We're on 3425, that is correct.
Okay, just making sure. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and three, third readings of temporary ordinance 34-25.
Second.
A motion is second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 3425. Any discussion on the motion to suspend?
No, thank you.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonburg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules, waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 3425 passes nine to zero. Council member Hoop.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 3425. Any discussion? Um, not at this time.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonburg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to, to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 3425 passes nine to zero. Temporary ordinance 3525.
I have an ordinance to amend permanent ordinance 49-24, the Fairfield County Municipal Court Management Professional Pay Ordinance and to declare an emergency. This is through Administrative Committee, Mr. Locktonburg and Mr. Bizjack.
Council member Locktonburg.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of ordinance temporarily numbered 3525.
Second. We have a motion is second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 3525. Any discussion on the motion to suspend?
Uh, yes, these responsibilities of this new hire directly impact the law director's office, and so we're, that's why we're requesting suspension of the second and third readings so they can proceed with the hiring process.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 3525 passes nine to zero. Council member Locktonburg.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record ordinance temporarily numbered 3525.
Second.
A motion is second to pass, gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 3525. Any further discussion on?
No, at this time.
Okay, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonburg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 3525 passes nine to zero. Council member Locktonburg.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record ordinance temporarily numbered 3525.
Second. A motion is second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 3525. Any further discussion on?
No, thank you.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonburg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
for background.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. So, Oxbies has been over on the east side of town for some time. They're in a temporary facility, you may all have seen that, kind of a food truck situation, hoping to move into the Ponderosa end of the strip mall there and open a, a permanent full-time restaurant. But the, whenever somebody applies for a liquor license, there is a background check done. The background check was provided to the Lancaster Police Department. Deputy Chief Kaden actually went through that information for me and then also entered the individuals' names in the city's CAD, our, our dispatch information system, basically, and was unable to find any, any negative things associated with either the names of the owners or with the address there where Oxbies is currently located. So, on the public safety side, neither myself nor the police department see any reason to, to oppose the issuance of a new liquor permit for this business, and just wanted to make you all aware so you can vote one way or the other. Thanks.
Thank you. So can we entertain a motion to allow the issuance of?
Motion.
Okay. So we have a motion pending. Do we have a second to allow the issuance?
Second.
We have a second. A motion in the second. All those in favor for allowing the issuance of the proposed liquor license, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. We now move on to, we have two new appointments, as alluded to in the Finance Committee meeting by the mayor, of individuals to the BZA. Mr. James is in, in the audience now, and we appreciate his service. And Ms. Anderson is in Chicago with a new baby grandchild, so I will entertain a motion to make these two appointments to the BZA. Do we have a, a motion?
So moved, Mr. President.
Councilmember Bisjack. And second, Councilmember Schoonover. All those in favor of the appointments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you for those appointments, and thank you for your willingness to serve on the BZA. It serves an important function. Are there, is there any new business from council members this evening that you would like to bring before council? Yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Ailes?
I would like to read a letter that was presented to the Parks Board by Judith Edwards, who served as a Park, Park Board member for 35 years. So I think we should listen to what she has to say. It's addressed to the members of the board. This letter is written to you as concurrent commissioners of the Lancaster Park Board Commissioners to share my concerns regarding the lack of development of Bowers Memorial Park. It has been more than six years since the city accepted a donation of 20-plus acres of land from D. Merrill Bowers for development into Bowers Memorial Park. As you may know, I was instrumental in encouraging this donation from Mr. Bowers while I was a member of the Park Board and worked with several superintendents to complete the donation. It is an extreme disappointment to me that the Park Board has failed to move this forward with the development of the Bowers Memorial Park, originally envisioned as a replacement sports baseball park for Miller Park, which the city threatened and is now completing changing into the city water department plant. New ball, new ball diamonds were a priority. Although Mr. Bowers believed moving baseball diamonds to his donated land would solve the need for diamond relocation, and the Parks Department developed a plan for installation of ball field complex, Mr. Bowers did not restrict his donation to the use of only ball fields. Shortly after the donation was accepted, there was an article in the Eagle Gazette about the donations and plans for the new work. Mike Tharp was quoted as saying the park should be ready for use by 2021. Obviously, this did not happen. The legal ownership documents require the land donated by Mr. Bowers and accepted by the city be used only as a public park and until development of the property conveyed to, to be used only as open green space for agricultural purposes. The Bark, the Park Board has failed to follow through with the original plan, and by stopping midway in its regrading efforts, is not using the land as open green space for agricultural purposes, thus thwarting Mr. Bowers' intentions. I do understand the issues faced by the Park Board for this project. COVID intervention, changes superintendent's diversion of funds when the purchase development of General Sherman property was undertaken, but six years is a long time to wait to see some activity on a previously conceived project. In addition, the suspension of the initial grading of the property has left the property in an unsightly and deplorable condition and an eyesore to the neighborhood. Over the years since the donation, I have spoken to Mike Tharp and Steve Gayfield about this project with various explanations given for the delay in the development and assurances that the property is still going to be developed. While I still believe there is a need for more baseball diamonds in the city, if a different use, if a different park use of this land is considered more desirable, I urge you to move forward and at least restore the property to a cleaner, more pleasant look, but preferably to timely develop Bowers Park into a park that will be a benefit to the community. I also bring to your attention the donation of $786.47 that was made to Friends of the Parks in finalization of the Bowers estate and from the memorial donations made by Friends to be used as a plaque on the proposed, proposed shelter house with the inscription, "This property donated by D. Merrill Bowers for the enjoyment of the community." I hope that the Friends of the Parks have earmarked these funds for the purpose, and someday in the foreseeable future, such a plaque can be installed. It is a deterrent to future potential donors. When accepting a gift, the Park Board fails to follow through with the stated intentions in part motivated the gift. I urge you to honor the donation of Mr. Bowers by prioritizing the development of the land he donated into a park for the community good. That's signed Judith Edwards. Now, the reason I'm reading this tonight is, I need to explain this, a little background. I, I've been on the board, I've been on city council for almost three years, for the second time. I've attended 90% of the Park Board meetings. I, I've heard all of the reasons that the park hasn't been developed, and I'm not accepting any of them. They sound a lot like excuses that are repeated over and over and over and over again. Primarily, they, there was an agreement with the Ohio engineers, they used it as a training facility for equipment operators, and they were going to do the excavation in the park for free in exchange for diesel fuel. Well, it's not getting done. I have, I, I've been back on council for three years. I've seen very little, if any, earth moved at Bowers Park. The, the real reason that I wanted to read this to you is I'm not really sure that anyone on this council would have ever seen this letter if I hadn't been at the Park Board meeting and got a copy of it. And another reason that I think it's important is that in the May meeting of the Park Board, the president of the Park Board looked me square in the eye when I asked him about Bowers Park and said, "If it were up to me, I would not spend a penny on Bowers Park." So some flags went up. Three years, I patiently attended meetings, patiently listened, and then heard that. And I said, "Okay, what I'm doing is not working, so I need to do something else." So this is part of me doing something else. You need to understand that if you are serious about developing Bowers Park, you need to step up. You need to do something. And what I'm proposing, and I asked the law director for an opinion, and she told me today that she doesn't see any reason why we couldn't do this, but the only power that I see that we have over the Park Board is through the budget. Well, when you lump the budget, when, when we vote on the budget, we vote on the entire city budget. So do you want to be the guy that says no because you're unhappy with one piece of the budget? And I don't want to be that guy. So what I'm going to propose is that we vote on the park budget separately, and we hold our feet to the fire. And if there isn't money in the budget, sufficient money to move this project forward once and for all, we should veto their budget. They earmarked $75,000 for Bowers Park this year. It is July the 14th, and they have spent zero dollars on that park this year. So I just want to get that out there. I want to make the, the, the letter part of public record, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ailes. The letter will be made part of the council minutes for this evening. Do we have any further comments by council members on new business? Councilmember Teener?
Yes, last April, I made a video and I posted online, got over 30,000 views of Bowers Park. I'm going to go out tomorrow and make another one to show you nothing has changed. One of the reasons I'm glad that Mr. Ailes brought this up, because I'd been, I have attended Parks Board meetings before, and I was at a Parks Board meeting, and it was quite a healthy discussion. I was there complaining about something that needed to be, had attention brought to. And none of what I said, it just showed that I was in attendance. It did not, one thing I said was in that, and nobody, everybody that knows me, I never go anyplace without saying something. So something should have been in there. It was a pretty healthy discussion. And that's kind of why I just think that the Parks Board, I'd asked before when Scheffler was to remove the people, because I could see how things weren't being right by the taxpayers. And that's why I was also against the permanent tax levy for the parks, because I, I don't think a permanent levy always helps because you can't hold their feet to the fire, because then they can do whatever they want. So I'm with you on that.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from council members at this time? Hearing none. I just wanted to put forth that in new business going forward, there's going to be an agenda change. I will be asking for each committee chair to give a brief update of their committee activities or when their next upcoming meeting is. We're just going to be working to increase our education as council members and our transparency. So keep that in mind for our next council meeting. You'll have a brief, if you don't have an update, if you don't have any legislation pending, you can pass and say our next meeting is whatever date. But if you do have something significant that's come forward before your committee, we'll give you an opportunity to discuss that and bring it forward before council. We can all read your minutes, but I think also hearing it is helpful for our folks. So just that note. Now we'll move on to the announcements of scheduled meetings.
I have next regular sessions of council, August 11, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. here in council chambers. August 25, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers.
Any special scheduled meetings?
I have none.
Regularly scheduled committee meetings?
I have five of them. I have Administrative Services Committee, July 16 at 8 a.m., City Hall 1897 Conference Room. Code Enforcement Committee meeting on July 17 at 7:30 a.m., City Hall 1897 Conference Room. Water, Water Pollution Control Service Committee, July 21st at 7:30 a.m., City Hall 1897 Conference Room. Economic Development Committee meeting July 24 at 7:30 a.m., City Hall 1897 Conference Room.
Thank you. Reading of bills?
I have two of them for MNCO. It's, one's for $58.60, the other one's for $133.16.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to pay the bills. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. No need for an executive session. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is adjourned. Please remember to sign your legislation and also to everybody, thank you for attending tonight, and our next council meeting will be August 11. We're on a brief recess due to the festival, so thank you.